Thank you for joining us this evening. Before we start our meeting, I'd like to ask Mark Barcellus, Los Banas Elk Lodge, to give us our invocation. If we could stand, please?
I would like to say that it's an honor to be here in front of our mayor, council, staff, and Los Banas community. Lord, as we come together tonight, we would like to thank you for allowing us to be a community that uses honor, respect, and grace for the base of its principles. As a community that not only has had good times and bad, we ask that you help our mayor, council, and staff to work not only as a team but a family, to lead our community not just in the near future but for times beyond our years. Amen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. I'd like to call this meeting to order for January 15th, 2025.
Do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we have roll call, I have a letter here to read. I need to read it into the record. That's from Ken Lambert. "I want to take a moment to express my deepest gratitude to all the department heads and their dedicated staff for their unwavering support and assistance over the past four years. Your efforts have greatly contributed to fulfilling the needs of my district and our city. In recent months, I have been facing health and medical challenges that require my full attention and care. Now, I must make priorities my health and family. I want to make it clear that throughout my time as a council member, I have always acted independently, without influence or coaching from anyone inside or outside the council. Serving as a council member has been both an honor and a challenge. It is a role where decisions are rarely universally agreed upon, but my goal has always been to make choices that benefit not only my district but the community as a whole. To the incoming council, I wish you all the best as you continue to guide our community forward in a positive direction. With that, I formally submit my resignation effective immediately." So that was from Ken Lambert. Ken's a good man, and we wish him all the best health and happiness in his life. And with that, Lucy, if we could have roll call, please?
Sanders? Chavez?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Emmett Bill?
Here. Here. Now, we have approval of the agenda as submitted. Recommendation is to adopt the agenda as submitted.
Mayor, so moved.
If we could have a second, please?
A second, that?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve agenda as submitted. Any questions or comments? Not hearing any? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carried. Now, I have some presentations to hand out. Okay, I don't think we have proclamations for a year of service. I don't think there's anyone here for the Airport Commission. Anyone here from the Airport Commission? No? Okay. So anyway, I want to recognize David Anderson for his fine work at the Airport Commission, and Larry Leonardo. And that's another one, so... Next? Letty? Is she here somewhere? For Measure H, any Measure H committee members? Oh, I'm here. Well, thank you very much. I guess I'm not on that anymore. We need to find a replacement. And is Eldred Johns here? No? Okay. We would like to recognize them, so Eldred Johns and Letty Guerrero for their work on the Measure H. That's an oversight board. That's very important to make sure they're looking at our sales tax initiatives for Measure H, public safety. See, Measure P, another public safety. Tim? Tim McNally? No? I don't see Tim. Anyway, Tim McNally's on the Measure P Committee. Again, Tim does a fine job. Measure P is the first half-cent sales tax was way back in the early 2000s, which built our police station. Parks and Rec. Gary Munoz? Gary, you here? No? See him? Shamar Pierce? And Brad? I saw Brad, yeah. Brad, hey, you're here, Brad. Thank you so much. Anyway, Brad does a great work for us on the Parks and Rec Commission. Very important commission. We have a lot of parks and works with Joe in making sure things are going the correct way in our city, and his involvement is crucial. So I want to give you this proclamation in honor of your year served on Parks and Rec, and we really appreciate you. Okay? Let's take it. I was told I wasn't smiling enough from Jane, so... Elias Reyes here? Elias? Oh, there you are. Okay. Come on up. Elias. Planning is a very important commission. It meets right before the council meets, does all the planning for construction, business, industry, looks at plans, at the lands. It's very important. So we really appreciate Elias's contribution to the city, and with this proclamation, we honor you for your service. Thank you very much. Thank you, Elias. Kathy Mulley? Is she here? I see her. And she does a great job on the planning commission. Christopher Prohn? One of those two people, great job on the planning commission, we really appreciate their service, too. And we have openings on all these commissions, so if you want to serve your community, it's really interesting. And later in the meeting, I will announce all the openings that are available, but we appreciate everybody's willingness to serve, appreciate the staff working with them, and we'll go on with our meeting now. Two more? Well, never mind. We got two more. Tree Commission. Maricarlo? Mary? Is she here? No? See her? And Tom Cowgen? I don't see Tom either. So those two people are on the tree commission. I actually created a tree commission way back in the 2000s, early 2000s, and it started with one of the very first things, with the CCID trail. So those things are important, make sure the city stays in line with our trees. Now, it's the proclamation. On the 20th, come on. On the 20th is Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., on both sides, come on in. And we're going to be honoring, we're going to have a march, starts at City Hall on that day at 10 o'clock, correct? And that's very important, to honor the service that he gave to our country without violence and showing, recognizing the importance of organizing people together and showing what's right. And it's my honor, therefore be it proclaimed, that the mayor and the city council members of the city of Los Banas do hereby recognize Monday, January 20th, 2025, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the city of Los Banas, and encourage all citizens to celebrate and remember the many accomplishments of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Thank you, gentlemen. Yep? Okay, at this time, we're going to open our public forum. Members of the public may address the city council and members on any item of public interest that's within the jurisdiction of our city. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and the speakers are limited to five minutes of their presentation. At this time, I'd like to invite anyone that'd like to speak to us, the city council and the public, please come forward. Welcome.
Council members, Mr. Mayor, staff, my name is Raul Granillo. I'm the pastor of Mercy Springs Church, and I'm also a member of this amazing community. I like coming to the council meetings to just be a part of what's happening and to see, I don't know, how, get a feel of what's happening in our community. But I also want to make sure that when I come up, that I bring you guys a word of encouragement, because I get that what you do is not an easy task. I know that a lot of times, we try really hard to be, maybe hope we're humble, or we try to do things that are righteous, or maybe we try to do things just right in a moment. We try so hard to do that, that we end up missing entirely and find ourselves actually causing problems rather than being a part of the solution. And sometimes, because we go in there with this idea that what we're doing is right, it becomes very difficult for us to change course, because we're convicted, we're just convinced that we're taking the righteous road, so I must be right. After all, what I'm doing feels right in my bones. And we may believe that our perspective is so correct, we may believe in ourselves so much that we actually shut our ears to anything that we don't want to hear. As a pastor of a church and having been on board, I often joke with new board members that the way to know that we truly compromised is that nobody's happy. These compromises means that we take a path that you may not have chosen for the sake of a bigger goal, for something that's beyond what me as an individual wants. Compromise means that the team agrees to take a path that may not be the one that a single member desires to take. And I want to kind of warn you to be mindful, that to intentionally take a separate path or to sabotage an agreed course of action, such as following a different set of agreed-upon rules to make a decision, is not to compromise. It's actually divisional, and in a house that's divided upon itself cannot stand. When the members of the council go rogue, regardless of how important it is to them, they sacrifice the entire community to satisfy their own desire. And believing that they do so justly doesn't make it so. This group, you all, are a team, and you must work as a team. And you are going to find yourself, I'm sure, in positions where the team has chosen to act differently than you desire or that you think is even best. And while you all have the right, even the responsibility to speak against it or to vote against it, once the council has agreed on something, each one of you is obligated to support that decision with the genuine desire that it becomes successful. Whenever the council settles a matter by vote, every person up here is obligated to support that decision. By taking those seats, and I've listened to the oaths a lot lately, and sadly, we're going to listen to it again, I'm sure, in that oath is you're doing this of your free clear mind, you're choosing to take this seat. And by taking this seat, you begin by agreeing to certain rules. And one of those rules that you are agreeing to is to support the agreed-upon modes and policies to your fullest, even when they are not what you wanted, because your actions affect this community. Your seats are voices of this community, and when you don't do that, you harm this entire community. Friends, you're a team. You will disagree, and that's great, because your diverse voices are what make this amazing. It's what is your strength, not your weakness. But you are all on the same side, and so I just want to encourage you to create an atmosphere where each one of you supports and will protect the authority and the voice of every other member on this council. As always, you're all in my prayers. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi. My name is Kathy Ballard. Good evening. I want to commend our new council on freeing us from Mr. Pinero. I wish our past council had not brought him back with a contract that has cost us more money. The original council that did the firing, I wish it was upheld, because this is why we're paying out so much more. Since that overturn, it has cost us money, employees, possible strikes from our employees that protect and serve us. This has cost the city a lot, over $2 million to one person in particular. No amount of tree trimming, painting, and parks was worth that. I'm looking forward to a transparent council and ones that will listen to its citizens. Already, as you can see behind me, more and more are becoming involved. We saw that when we had two seat openings for appointments with the applicants that came forward. I hope this will continue, and more citizens will contact their representatives when they have questions or concerns. I also hope that all of you up there will work together to answer those questions and to not throw obstacles in our path to getting our concerns heard. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. We want to thank you for recognizing Dr. Martin Luther King Day, Pastor Keith Johnson from New Canaan, and also Pastor Michael Neversen from First Baptist. We're not able to make it tonight. We've organized it together this year, and so we will start, we want to invite the community to come out with us and celebrate Dr. King's legacy. We'll start here on Monday at 10:00 a.m., and we will march to Main Street, down to I, and then over to Bethel, where we'll have a service. So we would like to invite you to come and join us to celebrate Dr. King's legacy. We have a lady from our community, a member of our church, who actually met Dr. King when she was a child, and so has his autograph, and so she's got some amazing stories and impacts on her life that he had, so we encourage you to come out and hear her and celebrate his legacy together. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening, council. Julie Creighton, citizen of Los Banos. Well, the change of events, I've had to reformulate what I was going to speak about tonight. First of all, I want to welcome Mr. Chavez and Mr. Sanders and wish you the best of everything. I'd also like to take this opportunity with the permission of the gentleman I'm going to speak about here, that you consider him for District Seat 1. That would be Mr. Tommy Leva. He proved he has chops to take the heat, because he was slandered so heavily during the campaign season. I think that proves right there, because he's sitting right there, that he will, he'll stand. Another thing I wanted to speak about is had an unfortunate notification that we lost another finance director. I understand that this person was there for less than a month and walked out of the job, so we need to figure out why we can't hang on to finance directors. I've lived in this city all my life, and usually the finance directors were here for many, many years. They made it a career. I don't understand why a person that's making such a good salary with good benefits would, you know, not stick it out, but we need to find out why this is happening. This is a very important department in our city, and we need a person that's actually an employee of the city that has some, you know, dedication to the city, perhaps somebody that lives here and has a vested interest in what's going on with the finance department. So I'd like for you to consider to find out what's going on there and get that matter resolved. Anyway, I'm happy to see that looks like we're going to have a new atmosphere up here now. You know, a group of us have been fighting for a couple of years now for transparency and accountability, and I hope that we can right this ship and move forward with that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please come forward. Okay, I do not see or hear anyone coming forward, so I will close the public forum at this time. And are there any written?
I've seen your pines.
Okay. Okay, at this time, we'll go on to Item 7, consideration and approval of the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be a routine and will be voted on with one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And Lucy, if you want to state what's on the consent agenda?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows, or numbers 249362 through 249432, in the amount of $199,861.40. City Council Resolution Number 6868, accepting the Monroe Avenue Waterline Replacement Project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Reporter. City Council Resolution Number 6869, accepting the West Ice Street Sewer Lift Station Rehabilitation Project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Reporter. City Council Resolution Number 6870, accepting the Animal Shelter Building Project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Reporter. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, at this time, is there any questions on the consent agenda from any council members? Okay, then I will ask for a motion.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as read by our city clerk.
Okay, we have a motion and second, to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Any further questions or comments? Not hearing any? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next item is Item 8, appointment of members to the following commission. We have Airport Advisory Commission, and with this, I'm going to go to our Public Works Director, City Engineer, Chuck.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we had two applicants for the Airport Advisory Commission and the council member Louis, Mary Emmett Bill, and myself. Mayor Ammell, Bill, and myself interviewed both candidates, Mr. Dave Anderson and Mr. James Davis. And they both have good backgrounds in aviation. Mr. Anderson himself has served on the commission for several years. And Mr. Davis had expressed a, has a background in flying and business, so they look like they're very good candidates to appoint to the advisory commission, and staff would like to recommend their appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Burson. Any questions or comments on those recommendations by the council? Then we need a motion.
Are we going to take them separately, then, or...
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation to appoint Mr. Anderson and Mr. Davis to the Airport Commission.
Do you have a second, please? Do you have a second? Okay, we have a second and a motion. Any further questions or comments? Not hearing any. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. And I'd like to thank Mr. Anderson and Mr. Davis for willing to volunteer onto the Airport Commission. We really appreciate their willingness to serve. Now, we'll go on to Planning Commission, and with this, we'll go to our Mayor Protem Lewis, the Planning Commission, appointments from her district.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we had two candidates for Planning Commission. Mrs. Kathy Uli, who's done an excellent job for the past four years. I really appreciate all the work that she's done and her talent and insight, especially in design. It was extraordinary, and she also served on our, let's see, what was the other one? The Safety Committee, I believe, yes. But I made a decision, along with the mayor, that we were going to choose a different candidate to be on Planning Commission for District 4, and that is Mr. Gregory Hicks. So I'm happy to appoint him to that position, and I wish you well, and I'm sure you're going to get much help from our planning department and from our staff. And with that, Mayor, I will make a motion to appoint Mr. Gregory Hicks to District 4 for Planning Commission.
Okay, I'm going to give you a second. Okay, we have a second, motion and a second. Before we move on, Stacy, you want to just say a few words about the Planning Commission? Maybe we entice more people to apply.
Sure. So the Planning Commission is an advisory commission to the city council. They weigh on items and also have jurisdiction over items such as site plans, which are for new development of commercial projects. They are advisory to the city council on zone changes and general plan amendments, so they're a recommending body. So any type of development that comes before the city does go through the Planning Commission first. They are stewards of the general plan and the zoning code and the community design standards of the city. So quite a bit, it's a large area, but a fun commission to be a part of, because it is so hands-on, and they're really the commission that gets to see all the up-and-coming stuff that's happening in the city.
Thank you. And Stacy's the Director of Community and Economic Development. So with that, I'm honored to get, we already have a first and a second, to nominate Gregory Hicks for this commission. And all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Congratulations. We appreciate your willingness to serve. We're here, so good luck. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to Item 9, is Advertisements of Public Notices, and we'll go back to Director Susie Elms.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So we have three items. The first is a public hearing for a mobile food vendor that would be located at 402 Washington Avenue. This would be for Ivan Gonzalez, doing business as La Aliciencia, number 2. And this location did have a mobile food vendor before. This is at Sorenson's, True Value. The next item is for the City of Los Banos Parks and Recreation. It is for five shade sail canopies at five different park locations. The parks are at Ranchwood Park, Citrus One Park, Big Page Park, Meadowlands Park, and Davis Park, all of which are being paid by a grant from the First Five. Last item is for a proposed annexation, and this is for a project that the City of Los Banos is working on, and it's a property that the city owns near the wastewater treatment plant that staff is proposing to be annexed into the City of Los Banos. It's roughly 180 acres, and it would serve for a storm water basin for capture as well as incidental groundwater recharge. It would serve multiple benefits to the city for storage, incidental recharge, and re-regulation of various city requirements. And we would be partnering with Grasslands Water District on this project. And the capacity for the stormwater basins would be approximately 500 acre feet. So staff is proposing that we would annex this entire project site into the city, which is currently outside of city limits, so that the City of Los Banos is the permitting and regulatory agency versus the city having to go to the county each time we want to do something with this project. So that concludes my report.
Okay, and this is informational only. No action will be taken. And since I have you on the microphone, why don't you say a few words about the arch going over Sixth Street? I've been asked to answer questions on it.
So the gateway sign is currently under construction. This is at the north point of the intersection of Sixth and Pacheco Boulevard. The pillars are currently what is under construction right now. We will see the steel beam of the arch being installed the last week of January, and we are anticipating completion, final completion of the project about mid-February. So the continued process, the pillars, which are the structural components that will hold up the steel, are being completed. Then the steel will be installed, and then the finishing work will be the last piece. We're going to have some stucco, some nice stone veneer, and then the sign will be lit LED on both sides.
Great. Thank you for that. Okay, now we'll go to our City Manager's Report, and I will read a statement. Effective January 11, 2025, City Manager Josh Panero resigned from his position, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Panero for his service and dedication to the City of Los Banos. His efforts have contributed to our community in many ways. This decision reflects my commitment to ensuring a fresh start for our city as we work towards a future built on integrity, transparency, and progress. Your city council remains dedicated to serving the people of Los Banos and will take swift action to move forward with our plans to prioritize the needs of our residents. So with that, we wish Mr. Panero all the best. So we will go in on to Item 11, is Report Updates of Merced County Association of Governments, Peninsula Clean Energy, Measure V Committee, San Juanquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, and the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. So with that, we'll start with Merced County Association of Governments. And I have a meeting tomorrow in Merced at 3:00 p.m. I'll report at our next city council meeting what we will be going over and discussing and approving. There's nothing to report on the Peninsula Clean Energy. I have some meetings with those individuals. I just met them, and I'm on their board now, so I will learn more about that real soon. The Measure V Committee? That's empty, just that, that other thing? Okay. Yeah, so the measure, I think I was on that, too. I was on, you sort of lose track of all the committees you're on. And San Juanquin Valley Air Pollution, that is Ms. Lewis, so do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor. Our meeting is tomorrow, so I will have a report at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. And on Downtown Property and Business Improvements, we have to designate a council member to go on to that board, because it was Mr. Jones before, and we have not done that yet, so we will get to that in the near future. Okay, so now we'll go on, that was informational only. We'll go on to City Council members' reports, and we'll start with Member Mayor Protem Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, I want to thank Kathy Uli for her four years of service as our Planning Commissioner for District 4. I don't take that lightly. I think she did an excellent job, and I really appreciate all the talent that she brought when she held that position. And again, welcoming Mr. Hicks into that position. Mayor, I would like to make a request at our next council meeting to bring forth the ordinance that deals with the majority of the council making a decision on the hiring and termination of city managers, so we can get that out of the way and have that done with as we move forward with the selection that we will do in the future. I don't feel like we should have that lingering over our heads, so...
Are you talking about the votes and things like that?
Yes, the one that requires the vote, so...
So that was, that was an ordinance, right?
It was an ordinance, and I don't recall what the ordinance was.
I'd have to double-check, but I don't think it's by ordinance. It was simply by Mr. Panero's contract.
Well, that's the part that I want to address. It's in the ordinance that it's done by contract, whereas prior to that, it was done by a simple majority vote without cause. So we need to, we need to work on that change of that.
Okay.
So I'm requesting that be on the agenda for our next meeting.
Okay.
And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Sanders.
I would just like to say thank you to Mayor Ammell and Ms. Lewis for supporting me, my appointment to the council. I am looking forward to doing my part to set a tone of transparency, growth, and prosperity going forward. I visited the animal shelter this morning. Commander Meldon and Sergeant Mendez were kind enough to show me around. I just want to take a look at it before we approved it today. It looks like a big improvement, so I'm really happy that we got that done, because the old one was in really sad shape. And also, I look forward to meeting residents of the city, both in my district and outside of it. I am available on, I got some profiles up on Facebook and Instagram. You can find me in either one. Just search Evan Sanders Los Banos, or come introduce me, introduce yourself to me at a council meeting. I'm not always angry, this is just the face that I have. So I'd love to meet all of you. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to Mr. Chavez.
So, yeah, I would like to thank also Mayor Ammell and Councilman Lewis for the support as well. You know, it's, I don't take this lightly as far as, you know, having to be here on the council. Definitely, like I said before, I'm no politician. Trying to, you know, learn as best as possible and do what's best for the city, you know, and Evan invited me earlier to join him at the animal shelter, so he got to tour that, like he said. And, yeah, it definitely is a big improvement, and, you know, and then after that, we gone and checked out the shooting range, you know, with Officer Meldon as well, you know, and kind of talked to us about what's needed there, so got a little up to speed and as well, you know, took a look at the police department and kind of, you know, see what's going on there as well. You know, there's a lot of stuff that we still need to do. We still plan to get around and visit all the different areas of the city, get to know everyone, and, you know, what is it that we need to get working on? I know there's a lot of things, so, you know, please, please be patient, you know, but I think we've got some good things coming, and it's good. You know, Saturday, I was out at the fairgrounds for the cleanup that we got, and, you know, that's a great thing. I was out there and I saw the operations manager, Rick, who was running it, runs a tight ship, pretty efficient. I remember a few years ago, I'd be over there by the community center lined up to go unload, and I was like, wow. Got there this time, and it was like, where's the line? And that thing was moving. And, you know, I was there for a while with him and his crew visiting, and they got it down. It's pretty good, so we got to keep that stuff going as well, and what else can we do for the community? But, you know, as well, if you want to reach out, you know, I know I'm on the website. I'm still trying to get my bearing straight here, but, you know, reach out to me at council meetings, just like Evan says as well. You know, we're here, and I got the same issue sometimes when they say, yeah, I'm not mad or anything, it's just sometimes this is kind of my face. Definitely feel free to visit anytime. All right? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's see. Paul, I want you to talk a little bit about your strike team, what's going on.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, members of the public. Our crew's been deployed out to the Eaton Fire. They've been there for approximately a week. It's burned about 14,000 acres. They have about 45% containment, so the containment's a whole lot better than it was. I know, I talked with my crews this morning, they were worried about last night due to increase the Santa Ana winds again, so it was over 50 miles an hour. They were assigned a lot of mop-up and a lot of humanitarian support, in support of our urban search and rescue task forces that went down there. So I've been kind of keeping a close eye with our folks. They're seeing a lot of the impact with the community, so they're spending a lot of time with the community, so I'm just kind of checking on their well-being also. We're hoping to have them back before the end of the week, but they may be down there longer. There's about 3,400 personnel assigned to the Eaton Fire, and I'm hoping that they can get it under control quickly, so we can get our folks home. As for home, we have our stations fully staffed, and we have backfilled our positions, so we're sitting good right now.
Good. Thank you, Chief. Thank you very much. Let's see, I'm going to go to our city attorney, council, Bill Vaughn, because things are a little bit different with the resignation of Mr. Lambert than how we handled things in the past. So, Bill, could you bring it up here?
Just a clarification, the government code does not allow for appointment, or that would end up with more than a majority, or a majority are appointed to the seats, so it will necessarily require an election. The city clerk and I are already looking into... Sorry. I'll repeat myself. The government code does not allow to fill Mr. Lambert's seat by appointment, because there's a code that says that a majority of the members of the council can't be seated by appointment. So we'll necessarily have to call a special election to fill that vacancy. The city clerk and I are reaching out to Merced County to find out what dates are available for a special election. There are some very onerous timeframes within which we can do that, and so we'll be looking to do that and bring that to you at your next council meeting.
Thank you very much. So you can't have a council where the majority, which would be three out of five, can be appointed. So there's a lot of, we could call an election, a normal election, which costs, we don't know how much it's going to cost, somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000 probably. We could do a mail ballot election, and that would cost less. I know there's a timeframe, you have so many days since the city council calls for an election. It can happen, but it looks like it's going to be an election. So just wanted to let, and we just found that out tonight, right before we came on. Okay, thank you, Bill. And I just want to go over the commissions that are, the openings on our commissions, and I invite anyone that's interested, learning a little bit more about how your government works, and also be part of the city. It's very rewarding. We have one vacancy and one two-year, one one-year and one two-year term on the Airport Commission vacant. On Measure H Oversight Committee, there's two vacancies. On the Measure P Oversight Committee, there is one vacancy, and that is a three-year term. The Planning Commission at this time, there's two vacancies, one unexpired vacancy that goes on till the 31st, 2026, and one at-large vacancy expiring 2026. and one at-large vacancy expiring 2026. So the at-large vacancy on that would be my appointment. The way Planning Commission works, each council member can appoint someone from their district, and I can appoint someone at-large anywhere in the city, since I am elected at-large. Tree Commission, there are two vacancies, and they both expire in '26. So I invite you, be part of this council and move in our city forward. We invite you. We want everybody's opinion, everybody's thoughts, and we love your contributions. We're going to start having, we're going to start having parkside chats. We're going to be all over this town talking to people. It's going to be very important to move the city forward, because it has to be what the people, our residents, want. So if you want to be involved, these commissions are a very good start. Okay, so I think that's all I have. So we're going to go into closed session right now, talking about acting interim and city manager. Just talk about that a little bit. So when you don't have a city manager, there's only so many days a city can function without a city manager. And I guess it's a law. And of course, there's a lot of daily things that city managers have to sign off on, and so we have to appoint an acting city manager. Usually, you appoint a city employee as an acting city manager, because there's no negotiations on salary, no contracts that have to be formed, and you can make this decision, the council can make this decision. From there, you usually go into an interim. You don't have to, but usually you go to an interim city manager that will stay a mounted time till we can hire a permanent city manager. So that's what we're going to be talking about in closed session. But before we go to closed session, we have a successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the city of Los Banas. This is what, it's called the DLA, the Designated Land Authority. I was on it for over 10 years, and I thought I was done with it till I was elected mayor, and now I'm back on it, so... But it's very important. Governor Brown closed the RDAs 10-plus years ago, and told each city to dissolve their RDAs. And so Los Banas and the city of Merced decided that they didn't want to dissolve the RDAs, they wanted the state to do it. So I was appointed by Governor Brown to help take care of this. So then, when we were finished, that's all the railroad corridor, Miller and Lux Building, Community Center, this was all RDA property, and I was very invested into making sure it went back to our city. And then in Merced, it was a lot of property in Merced, Costco's parking lot, a lot of things. And we were also involved in cleaning up. You might have seen a lot of cleaning up on the railroad corridor, and we were in charge of all that. I learned a lot doing that for those 10 years. And on that board was Cannon Michael and Jim Sanders from Merced, an ex-city council member. Two excellent committee members. So now we'll be, I will not close our other meeting, we're going to go into this meeting, because we have to pay our bills. And this usually happens once or twice a year, and it's usually paying the bonds is what you pay off. So at this time, I am going to open up the successor agency of the redevelopment agency for the city of Los Banas, April 15th. And with that... Since we're already called in? Yeah, we'll leave it open, so we can come right back to it. So we're all here, we already did roll call, we can just throw that over, we already did the pledge. So consideration of approval agenda, and it's recommend the adoption of the agenda as submitted. Do I have a motion to do that? Okay, second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. Any questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Now I open the public forum. Members of the public may address this agency board on any item of public interest that's within the jurisdiction of the successor agency. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. If you'd like to talk to this board, you're welcome to come forward right this time. It's not the city, it's the successor agency now. It's another hat. We're changing hats. Okay, I don't see anyone coming forward. I'll close the public forum. And consideration of approval of the Los Banas Successor Agency minutes. These are minutes from January 3rd, 2024. And so is there any questions or comments on the minutes? If not, if I could have a motion.
Yes, Mayor, I'll make a recommendation to adopt the minutes as submitted.
Can we have a second, please? Okay, a motion and a second to adopt minutes as submitted. Questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Item seven, consideration of approval of Los Banas Successor Agency Resolution Number 252025-1, approving and recognizing obligation payment schedules, ROPS, and administrative budget for fiscal year 2526. With this, we'll go to our finance consultant, Brett Hume. Brett?
Mayor, council, agency board members, sorry. So this recognized obligation payment schedule has to go through the board approval, and then, once that is done, it is then submitted to the Merced Oversight Board, which is really the governing board of the whole county, and it's made up of representatives within Merced County. And then after that takes place, it then gets submitted to the Department of Finance in California, of which they review, and then ultimately, they are the ones who are approving these. So we're going through these steps to get to the point of the Department of Finance looking at this and approving this. And this is basically tax increment from the old RDA. The state of California wanted, needed to kind of close the gap on a budget a while ago, and so they dissolved all of these. So we, within these obligations, are only putting in the obligations that have been prior approval. There's no new obligations to this agency. And then within these obligations, we have really just four remaining. We have administration of the DLA, we have the tax increment bond that was refinanced, and that was the bond that was, that built the community center. And there was some remediation in the past, but that remediation has all been done. So then there's some fees relating to the fiscal agent fees regarding the transmittal of RPTTF to the trustee to then pay the bondholders. And then finally, there's still some grandfathered contracts in from the lighting and landscaping districts that are along the rail corridor, that we continue to pay those assessments per an agreement that was grandfathered in. So basically, it's just those four obligations that we have remaining, and that is stated in the ROPS detail that was on, it's on Exhibit A, second page after the summary. The, in Exhibit A on the statement, you have a report of cash balances, and these are a report from fiscal year 2223 and that activity. And the reason why they have all of this is because also annually, we put together a schedule of all expenditures, and we submit to the county a prior period adjustment schedule of this. It accounts for all of the expenditures that happened during this time period, and we basically back out any amounts that we don't use during that time period, and that's netted against the overall RPTTF that's submitted. So within line item G, the RPTTF, you have the amount that was approved, the amount that was expended, and then the prior period adjustment was the amount that made up that difference. We, as you could see in column C, there were still some bond issue monies. These were used for remediation purposes, and a lot of this stuff happened in the DLA before we got this. So what happened is the DLA took over, as you stated, because the city chose not to become the successor agency, and then the state appointed people. There was still some transferred proceeds that were available within that bond issue, and the DLA had to use that for that specific purpose within the bond documents, and that was done prior to the transfer of all of those DLA properties to the city, which happened during fiscal year 2223. There was some reserve balances that were in there that the DLA had asked for some of those monies to be held for certain purposes. Right now, there's really just those, we're basically becoming kind of a financing agency more than anything. So right now, as I said, we have the administrative expenditures, we have debt, and then we have those contracts that we have with the lighting and landscaping districts. So this will continue on until the expiration of the project area and/or the outstanding debt, whichever comes last. And in this case, it would be the debt issuance, the refunding of 2016, or 214. So that's pretty much this report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions from any of the council? So it's basically the money set aside to pay the bonds, it's mostly, and like Brett said, it's the community development... Excuse me, our community center is the bond, the main bond that we're paying on. The RDA was created in 1996. The way an RDA works is that, once you establish it with the state and the county, you establish, it looks at all the values of all the property in Los Banas. You set your boundaries, and it sort of like freezes that in time, the value of that property. So if you have a piece of property, and the best example I always give is like the Walmart shopping, excuse me, the Target Shopping Center, that had been in a family for years and years, was hardly paying any property tax. It was just a field, you know, grew hay. And from that, we went and built a $35 million, they built a $35 million development on it. So the property tax goes from maybe $1,000 a year to 1% of $35 million. The difference between that base property tax and the property tax, and the new property tax of $35 million, goes to the RDA to establish, to get rid of blith in your community. And you can also, you can also use it for the community center and things like that. If you do the right things, you can use it for that. So the RDA was very important to this council at the time. And the way an RDA works is you basically borrow against the increment that's going to be coming in in the future. So you have money, you have a little pot of money you can spend, and we used it. When I was on the council the first time, we used it all over the city for many things. So anyway, then they closed the RDAs, and now RDAs are back. So I would be very interested in seeing the new modified RDAs that the state has, looking at those. I know it's not as, it's not as good for cities as it used to be, but I think it's something we have to look into.
We are actually, we have an appointment tomorrow, kind of, the pseudo-RDA. So yes, we're looking at that again. But in terms of this and the successor agency, so there's still tax increment, and that tax increment is still utilized the same way in which you said. The incremental property value is increasing. But now, instead of it all going to an agency that's controlled by, well, not controlled by the city, but kind of acts in the best interests of the city, it goes to the county, and then the county redistributes the difference of this ROPS, right? So there's still an amount that is still being collected over this, and this, it's called RPTTF. So it's property taxes, instead of tax increments, now called this. So what they do is they now take this and the difference of that, they redistribute those monies to the taxing agencies that are impacted by the project area, the overlay. And the county gets the lion's share. They kind of won in this whole thing. And then the school district and the city kind of get the same amount, it's about 18, almost 19%. And then you have the mosquito district, I think CCID is in there, and there's a few other agencies that get small amounts.
Cemetery.
So, yeah, cemetery, right. And so that's now, comes back to the city, that 18% as general revenue to the city. So it's general fund, so it doesn't have now the same restrictions as the redevelopment agency had. That just comes in, and that was the payoff to take less, I think, in terms of how this all worked out back in 2012 or whenever this happened. So in that process, we still kind of look, we identify it, still the same, that it's coming from redevelopment in our general ledger, and we kind of try to earmark it for development, community development as well. So it's kind of still operates as the same thing, but it doesn't have the same restrictions.
That's interesting. So we used to get 80%, and 20% went to low-income housing. So now it's 20%.
Right, and low-income housing really took the biggest hit, actually, with this, because that completely went away. They gave housing authorities or housing successors some admin money, but they only gave that admin money for five years, and then that was it.
So these other agencies that are now on, be able to get some of the money, would they be interested in helping pay for starting an RDA?
Oh yeah, there's a big, there's a big push to bring this back, yes.
So we have to talk to those other agencies? Okay, let's see. So with that, we'll consider Resolution 2025-1. If I could have that motion.
Okay. Mayor, I'd like to recommend that we receive staff report and adopt the resolution as submitted.
Okay, a motion and second. As stated, any questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Thank you, everyone. And I will adjourn this meeting, and now we're going to be going into closed session on our regular agenda of the city council. In closed session will be public employment. The title's acting interim city manager pursuant to government code section 54957B. If any action is taken in closed session, we'll be coming out here and taking a public vote on that. So if you stay with us, you're welcome to stay. Thank you for being with us this evening. And we'll be coming out shortly and giving a decision in closed session. Thank you. Okay, thank you for staying with us. In closed session, we are taking some action. Action was given by a 4-0 vote to prepare and authorize an RFP, Request for Proposal for Recruitment Firm, to conduct a search for a full-time city manager. That was a 4-0 vote. Another action was taken in closed session. Action was taken to request by a 4-0 vote that Ball Toala, our fire chief, accept the position of acting city manager. And that'll be effective January 16th, tomorrow at 2025. That's it, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for being with us.